Yeah, we'll call the October seventeenth Village and Waffle Board of Trump's meeting to order. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we do have a few people here who've filled in on a couple of different things. Just in the two shops, would you like to go first?
Yes, I can.
You're welcome to.
I'm all right.
Wait, it's up to you.
No, I'll go ahead.
There is a letter in here, I believe, right?
Yep.
Go ahead, Al. Go ahead.
Okay, uh, what I am exploring is the concept and the feasibility of annexing approximately thirty-eight point six acres of property that borders the northern end of Lawville, uh, it's on the north end of some of that, and runs up in, in behind Climax and Falcon at the Climax building. As probably most people are aware, uh, IDA, uh, Lewis County Industrial Development Association, has an option on that property, also including another seven acres that's already in the village. So they have an option on forty-eight point six acres, and some of it's already in the village. But, uh, for an industrial park, that is proposal. It is a, I've been a proponent for, in our conversations for the last couple of years, in regards to, it seems foolish to me that, um, what, the services are going to need to be extended, or at least enhanced, uh, but, you know, to that site. And, uh, it just seems to me that, uh, it's an ideal place for the village to expand and be a partner, uh, in industrial development in this, in this county. You know, they're pledging, you know, close to a million dollars of, of effort, uh, to build a road and everything back in there, and it just seems to me that if it's gonna be here in this county and gonna be next to the village, it might as well be inside the village. And, uh, you know, for, for future tax purposes. Everybody's aware that IDA is a tax exempt status, and if they did or did not purchase the property, uh, at first it probably wouldn't be taxable, which it is now to the village anyways. But as soon as anything is built and sold, it then becomes taxable, whether or not it get pilot agreement, or whether or not it be, you know, on, on assessed value taxable property. It also would seem to me that, at some point in the future, I believe, and I'm not a hundred percent on this, but I think IDA closed down Climax building today. Pretty sure that's the one that I got, that they closed on Climax building today. So, I mean, and that property, the property in question that we're talking about is property that borders Climax, and it just seems to me that, that whole thing would just all work together very well. They have so, an interested party from Canada that actually is interested in, in maybe starting up that portion of that hill. So, you know, there is, I guess it's, it's, there's some positive things going on. And, uh, I just would like to be in the presence to be able to help with that process, being the landowner that's on one side of the village.
Something, um, I would say something that had been discussed early on in the discussions with IDA meetings is, when they're looking at planning and zoning and so on and so forth, one portion is in the village, one portion is in the town, would require two separate entities, or two separate set of rules, I guess you'd say. Since then, we have joined our planning and our town and village planning and zoning board of appeals together, but still, village is one set of rules, town is another set of rules. Um, so that was something that had been brought up quite a few months ago, of, you know, what would it take for this to happen?
And there's, I got a map, and I, I'll pass it around to one of them.
I have, I have a question. Did you just saw you failed the seeker that the town board did for an industrial park development car?
No.
No.
No, they withdrew their application.
They withdrew their application, essentially, um, they are, I, were you there at the last board meeting again?
Yeah.
So the IDA essentially withdrew their application. There were too many questions, I believe, of what might be able to be there, um, and when the application, when the secret things were filled out, uh, from the town portion, they were looking at worst-case scenarios, which would have essentially failed seeker. The IDA would like to work with the community, and they aren't looking to bring anything in, but it would be something purely out of your area or something we wouldn't allow. But because they don't have a specific, a specific business to say, here, this is, they would love to be able to set up correspondence and have a group, um, work together on what should or could go into that area that would be a permitted use. So that's essentially why they withdrew.
Okay, so, so they failed the seeker?
No.
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 So was seeker done, correct?
It's been, nothing has been submitted.
Why did I even the minutes where there was a seeker?
They withdrew.
They withdrew.
Because they were, they were looking at things like, I don't even know, I'm not even gonna say.
I do, I don't know if you want to fill in or not, I can tell, I can name off the eighteen, the eighteen, uh, uh, questions that go from a, from a minor to a major, and that, and I don't know the exact name of the terms, I'm not an attorney, but I do know they identified eighteen different points in regards to the property that they had done by that needed further explanation and/or processes through seeker. For instance, number one is, there's a well on the property. Well, guess what? I own the property. That well's been there for twenty-five years, and it's been abandoned for the last twenty years. So how do you question there's a well on the property that's been ruined because it isn't even used? Uh, another, another was, uh, the Fairgrounds is a historical site, the Grandstands is a historical site. Any development on top of that hill, is that gonna impact the historical site of the Grandstand? Well, if you wanna take a look out your window out there, you can't see the property from the Fairgrounds, because the tree line completely, completely, uh, uh, shades the whole thing. So there's another question you can throw up. Uh, they questioned about the closeness to rock and the closeness to the, closeness to the hospital, and that therefore you couldn't do any, um, blasting if you had to the coastal rock. Well, they dug five test holes in the property and never hit rock. I've farmed that land for all my life, since I was that little, and been down and dug holes, there, there's no rock unless you go down there five or six feet below the surface. And again, I've done it, it is also the same kind of rock that is that. The, uh, Stone Quarry up on Route twenty-six, the, the top two feet is very, very good, and you don't get down to go to rock until you get down to about twenty feet. So the, the rock is very easily removed by either a track hole or with a track hole with a, with a, with a hammer on it. So that's another issue that you can throw up. And if you wanna keep going, I can keep going. But those are the type of things that are on that, that they had questions. And they will admit, or I've had several admit that they were erring on the side of caution. And we tried to, we tried to explore all different avenues rather than go through a full-blown seeker, which is about a sixty thousand dollar, uh, item to be able to do. And it's basically governmental money that's being spent for another government, and it, it just didn't make an awful lot of sense to go through that processes. They have an option to be able to reset, and then if, uh, they will not, would not be declared media agency, they have an appeal process, they can go to DEC. And within the state of New York, uh, over ninety percent of the cases that have been applied to DEC, the petitioning agency has won those cases, so. It, it's, it's just the processes they're gonna have to go through. And they hate to have you hiring attorneys and going through all that baloney, and, but that's where they're at. That's sort of it in a nutshell. But I do have, I do have a particular question, and I don't know if, if your village attorney has that answer, uh, and I don't, yeah, okay. Yes, this, this, this is the map of progress, and I'm equally mostly familiar with it anyway. Uh, the question I have is, okay, the, the village line runs now, we're up to the, that portion is already village. And this, that's what's, is what's going on with tree plate, which is actually, there's thirty-six on something here that I will be talking about in the next one. But, but it does wrap around and comes back out the state highway here, when the first goes to the golden areas with Climax. This is my son Nicholas', he, he owns the farmhouse, and he owns everything in between the, the U-shaped driveway that goes in there. I, last year subdivided the buildings off of this new parcel. I don't want, I wanna keep those buildings, as most people do, where I'm tearing them down and replating the lumber, and, uh, I'm selling lumber for the last few years to down in New York City. But I, I did want my son to have any liability in regards to that. So in my will, that is held to him, we guard that parcel eventually, but I wanted to keep it separate at this point. The question I have is more for probably attorney, but I don't even know the answer to this. Because this is contiguous here, but it does wrap around, it would isolate this parcel on this side of the road, it would not be congruent with other town parcels, if that, if the whole thing was annexed. So my son's, my son's residence and also this trailer that's up there across from, you wanna see that? I assume you're the attorney.
Yeah. So I want to see that.
This is it.
Yep.
One comes back out.
Okay.
Here's my son's property, this is how I said, I subdivided this off because I don't want to handle that over to everybody who's in town now. And you can see the village line right here.
Okay.
What I wanna do is, I wanted to next all of this, but I don't want necessarily to have the next act. I don't see where there's any benefit from a son or the trailer to be necessarily in the village.
Well, you got, he, he's not gonna do an in-luck from the town, I mean, the village owns it, but he, he is gonna do an in-luck.
Yes, he is.
Yeah.
Except for here is the hospital on the other side of the road, which is in the town. It's not in, it's not in the village. So can you hook?
That's a state highway, though, I'm not, I'm not sure that you can, uh, I have to look into, I have to look into that.
I didn't know that answer.
I have to look into that. Since that's a state highway, I'm not sure if you can, if you can, consider that to be contiguous or not, but we'll look into it.
I guess that's all I have.
We'll start the process.
Yes.
Well, obviously more discussion.
Yeah, and can somebody, somewhere in San Diego, just inform me what the process is? I mean, I have your attorney.
Yeah, but you're gonna have to know.
Okay, very good. You gave me time to go sell, yeah, thank you.
Well, let's keep him.
Joe? I'll have to go to the town, too.
Yeah, you, you have to file a petition, he's gonna, it's gonna, if the town's gonna have to consent to it, or you're gonna get into, uh, there's a, there's a way to resolve a dispute if the village wants it and the town doesn't wanna give it up, uh, but it involves the courts, so.
I'd talk to the town, but, not officially, but unofficially, and they haven't, they don't have any problem. But that's not official.
Well, that's why I was asking Joe, because their board meeting is tomorrow morning at nine-thirty, in case you needed to show up.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a quick process, there's a petition involved, public hearings, uh, findings, uh, issues to resolve as far as debt service and, uh, tax, taxes that have been assessed. I mean, it's, it, there's a lot of issues to, to address with it, so.
Al, why, why wouldn't you want a home on that versus an industrial park? I, I, I'm gonna be very honest with you, I'm totally against an, an industrial park, but I see half of the industrial parks in the state that are half-empty. But yet, we could have homes on there that will give us real taxes. You put an industrial park there, we'll end up with pilots, we won't see anything. Uh, I've never seen the town come, or not the town, the IDA come here and tell us who's gonna develop the sewer, who's gonna develop the water, and I find it, I'm gonna be very honest, here today is, we get this today, the day of the meeting, and I have, I wanna have time to digest all this, and I, I've certainly got a lot of questions, so, um, as far as I'm concerned, that's a great piece of land for a lot of homes that would really help this village. I've screamed for years for the town to give us homes to annex into the village because we sell all the water, and it doesn't happen, so I, I'm against doing anything outside of the village, uh, as we continue forward without seeing some real meat through the village.
I, I, I'll answer that in one thing. I've been involved since nineteen seventy-five with Plinview Estates and the Vinatton Sunset Drive and Hill Cross Circle, okay? And I, at the present time, own another fourteen acres that sits in the middle of the village, okay? And, so I've done, I've done development for quite a while, and, and I, I've got it on the tip of my fingers. Basically, with the codes and everything that are in the village right now, without any, without any, uh, changeover, it costs about a million dollars a mile to build a road. About a million dollars a mile. With storm sewers, retention ponds, sidewalks, curbing, the whole gap, water and sewer, electric and everything, it's about a million dollars a mile. Okay, so if I take that fourteen acres that I have, and I have it all designed, it's all designed and ready to go. And it, there's about thirty lots that'll be built on that fourteen acre. And if you take that, and the DOH is gonna require that you make a complete loop when you put in the water, gotta do it. So you gotta put it in the sewer, why you, why you have holes open, you're gonna have to do the same thing. So all the infrastructure has to be put in. So you've got all of that capitalized upfront, okay? Now, we did Hill Cross Circle, which is fifteen hundred feet, how many years did it take for that to get built out? Anybody got an answer for that? Twenty years.
It's like just finished?
Just finished, just finished. Okay, so here we are, every single one of those lots that developer, in my case, would have been me, would own, as soon as that, that street's detailed over the village, every single one of those lots is taxed by what the first lot sold for. So if the first lot sold for twenty-five to thirty dollars, whatever, and the cost per lot is gonna be in that neighborhood, infrastructure cost is gonna be between twenty and thirty thousand dollars per lot. And that's gonna be on a quarter acre lot, that's not on a half acre lot or an acre lot. The bigger the lot you make, the more the cost is per acre for the infrastructure cost. So therefore, not only have you got all your interest costs on that development, because I don't have a million dollars, and then you've got all of those taxes, um, if you sold one house that one year, you've got twenty-nine other houses, you're gonna pay tax on every single one of those lots. You can't do it. It, it doesn't work in Lawville, we don't live in Syracuse, we don't live all these other places. In fact, when a developer comes in, they put in an infrastructure and ban them. They bail out all those, bill all those out in a matter of a year or two, and they walk away. That's why it, it doesn't work in Lawville. And in that case, if we talk about that property up there, I have a right, as a property owner, to sell my property to whichever use I want it, so. And in a matter of fact, if you guys remember, I'm mostly probably unprivileged in this, but years ago, when Empire Zone came out in New York State, okay? I was approached by the Town of Lawville for my property to be included in the Empire Zone, and it was, okay? It was designated an Empire Zone, so Empire Zone meant that, you know, that any business that came in there got, uh, electric breaks, got tax breaks, got, uh, so many dollars towards employer, employees, like five dollars on that fifteen dollar employee, for something that could be able to make for businesses to come into the area. But lo and behold, all of a sudden, when the windmills came in, guess what happened? They didn't come to ask me if they could pull the Empire Zone off that property, but they did. And it goes around every single little windmill, I'm telling you. So here we are, you know, the, now, would the village have done that? If it had been a village piece of property, would you allow the Empire Zone? That was already zoned, already part of the village, and it was Empire, Empire Zone. All those benefits are tied to it, would you allow all those to go up on, on the windows out there? So that piece of property has been in the mind of a lot of people in this area for a lot of years. That was twenty, twenty years, twenty-five years ago, I was still out there in Farming back there. So, you know, it's been designated in a lot of people's minds as a place for development in the area. And IDA, when they did the research, they researched all the different village properties around, and mine is the least cost to be able to develop from everybody else, because of the water and sewer that's already there, and because of phase three power that runs all the way up to it already. It is the most advantageous piece of property for commercial industrial use in, in the village. So that's, that's where I'm from, and I don't, I don't mean to, you know, sell a case, but that's, that's where I come from, so.
Glad to have insight.
Any, any other questions? If not, I'm going off the tree stand.
I thought maybe you were headed to Syracuse tonight.
No, yeah, I knew, that's probably where you're going.
I was probably leaving before nine o'clock.
You wanna go with me? Come on, I got, I got room for another chair.
Thank you, Al.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Mickey?
Well, yeah, I don't have a presentation, but just a quick update on the LED lighting thing that Raytag had last night, just wanted to give, I know you guys were interested, so. Um, we met last night with, uh, Paul Vessel is the guy's name, with Real Term Energy Corporation. Uh, they do municipal-owned streetlight conversions, so we're in the municipality's ownership under the lighting. Um, so they have different solutions that they do. He ran through a bunch of stuff, which I did send the links to you, I think you're gonna mail down, um, and if you wanna pass those around, you, you can. Um, so basically, um, they handle almost everything, like even the maintenance, they schedule the maintenance, if a light goes down, and they handle all that, so you don't have to worry about it. Unless a village or a municipality wants to handle it, so if somebody had a bucket truck and they wanted to go do it, they could, but otherwise, they handle it. They subcontract to local electrical contractors to go out and then change the bulbs and that type of thing when they do go out. So from that, basically, what he kinda showed is after the, after the replacement of the current lighting with existing lighting and the acquisition and stuff, the bulbs, after that's all done, the, the maintenance and operating costs of that, you're gonna be a reduction of about seventy-five percent. Uh, obviously, there's cost for the initial purchase, so you're purchasing your lights back from National Grid. So they have different financing options, which are all part of that little link that I sent you, they're done. And, uh, so like, you know, either the community could just bond for it, and then pay the money upfront for doing the initial cost, and then, you know, pay it that way. Like, I think, for instance, they use the example like a ten-year loan at three point nine percent, there'd be immediately a cash flow of three thousand dollars on the positive side to the municipality, and that kinda keeps it going up at each year.
Per year?
Yeah, or, I'd have to check, per year. And then it goes up from there, and then once the loan's paid off, 'cause it's like, I think, for the year, it's like, I think it's like fifty-nine, sixty thousand, something like that, is what it starts coming out to be. The numbers are all in that, in what they have there. So, you know, there's different options with the loan, there's, you say usually the payback is sometimes is around seven years. So the payback, I think that's what they calculated for Carthage, 'cause they used the Village of Carthage as an example. That's also in there, the complete analysis they did for the Village of Carthage, and they said whatever the savings were for Carthage would be passed on to any other communities that did join the group in that sense. Um, he just ran it for Carthage, 'cause he had been doing a bill at the time, so he ran it for that. Um, so like right now, uh, our next step is, so the Raytag has already had National Grid coming to speak, they've had the Energy Certain Rider for Aint to come and speak, um, and now we just had, uh, Paul Vessel from Real Term Energy come and speak. Um, and then we just, uh, had somebody reach out to us from the New York Power Authority, which also does municipal-owned, but they act as more like a non-for-profit, I guess, type of a deal. So, uh, the board has decided to go ahead and have them come and speak, so they could hear the whole, all the solutions that are out there, then choose which one they would like to go forward on. But right now, we do have, uh, like the Fariet, Carthage, West Carthage, Champion only has like thirty lights, so they're, they're just whatever, you know, along for the ride, and then Wilma. Uh, obviously, Town of Lawville, Town of Denver don't have any lights, so it doesn't really affect them too much. And the Village of Constableville did come to the meeting last night, so they are interested. And he said that that's not too far away to hit, bring Constableville into the group also. So, um, he said basically, there's enough more savings by having more people, they have more power purchasing capabilities when they go out and put out the quest for getting the LED lighting and getting the pricing and that type of thing. So, um, overall, it's, it was, uh, it was a pretty good presentation that they did, and we're, our next steps is the New York Power Authority, which will be December, or no, I think they're back. We, we haven't, we haven't moved it out, we already have, um, December fourth, we actually have Ford Drum coming to speak. So they're gonna be in January will be the next presentation, so, um, and so that's the idea, it's the third Tuesday in January is when we meet, typically, around that time, and we'll have the New York Power Authority come in then. And then after that, that's when I expect the group will discuss things and how they wanna proceed and, and move forward, so. I don't know, I can try to answer some questions, but, but that's about all I.
I'll hold that information on and, um.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot in there, and they, they broke it all out, like how much it's gonna cost them, how much it can cost them to try to buy back their lights, and that was based upon averages of other municipalities that had to buy their lights back through National Grid, and what they found out what, what that would be, so that's what they kinda use right now, but, so that's, that's what everything's based upon.
Thank you.
Yep.
Questions?
Can I ask a question?
Oh.
Yeah, yeah.
So we looked at LED lights a while ago, and the idea is that they're gonna save money and generate savings in the power purchase. Right now, we have, shoot from the hip, I think we have over two-hundred and forty lights in the village that we, that.
Streetlights?
I don't know if we own them, or we just rent them from National Grid. So they're the old inefficient cores that are.
We rent all of them.
We rent them, so we don't own them.
The only ones that we own are on quarter.
So we, we pay, Pam, sixty thousand a year?
Yeah, I wanna say it's like about fifty-five hundred a month, maybe.
Fifty-five hundred a month for power for the lights in this village.
That's to rent the poles and for the power.
Right, right. So that's a great concept, and, you know, maybe you and I looked at this and have been very passionate about it. And the only reason I'm saying this is because you're talking about another meeting in January, where we're gonna be tearing up three point two million mile, or three point two million, three point two miles of road in the village right now. So the time to do a lighting project in the village is right now on that, those streets. So we could light three point two miles of the streets with LED. And I know it's cost, but the last thing we're gonna wanna do is decide to do this.
When it's.
When our project is finished.
I think, I think if you're looking, I think if you're looking to the future and sustainability, which is something that we've all discussed many times, this would be very advantageous of us to possibly focus on a little bit more over the next couple of months, try and get our heads wrapped around a lot of this, to be able to make a, an educated decision. And all of that money does come out of our general fund. Just commenting, you know, um.
Mickey, how many lights did Carthage have?
Carthage had three hundred and ninety.
Three hundred and ninety.
Yeah, that's Carthage, not West Carthage, West Carthage has two hundred or something there. And Wilma also has quite a few, I'm, I'm gonna think they're up. Altogether, the project had over a thousand, 'cause they won't touch really, the project must have had about a thousand lights. So all together, with all the municipalities in there, currently up in the Raytag area, there's, uh, over a thousand lights there.
I'm sure that in the village, there, there's places that could be lit.
Well, that's what they do also, do, they, so they do, so that, what they showed is that they handle everything. That's even do the photo design of how the street lightings are gonna shine in certain areas, so maybe in a high intersection, you might have a brighter light, in the residential, you might have a dimmer light. They do the complete design, but they go street by street, so they do design street by street, not just in general. Um, so that way, the IDA actually tell you that they'll, they'll come out, so you can have a public meeting, so people can come out, they'll talk, explain things to them, show them things, show them the differences, so that they get public input into it, too. So they, they handle like the hall works, and then, like I said, then usually there's a, you can either sign up for them to handle the maintenance every year, which means that if a bulb goes out, then they'll coordinate to have somebody go and replace it. And, uh, so you can do that, or you can do it on your own, and says they'll, they can work however, however you want with that, so. But yeah, they handle everything, they even do a complete GIS inventory of all your poles ahead of time. So they actually go out and do an audit of all your. So, they actually go out and do an audit of all your lighting poles, make sure the lighting that's there is correct compared to your inventory that National Grid has. Then they also said, as they're doing the project, you can actually track it, they give you access, you can actually track it on their online map, seeing what's happening with the project at any point in time. So, you can actually track as the lights are going up and being replaced, and track that too. So, that's all part of what, what they offer, so. Right now, like I said, that was, that was the one coming, and then the next thing we're just looking at is the New York Power Authority, because I know the Village of Crowe is looking into the Power Authority, just talked with them actually the other day. So now, they're interested, and I'm headed in November over to their meeting, because they're wondering about the LED project too going on, because they're getting close to maybe signing paperwork, but now they're like, well, wait, what, what do you have from, from your group? So, our next step will be reaching out to the New York Power Authority and having them, I think, come speak and just see what they have to offer. And they'll give us a, pretty much a full range of all options that are on the table, and then from there, the group will decide what they're gonna proceed. If you needed something sooner for a decision, is that what you're kinda saying, you might need to, something sooner?
Just a project of this magnitude, when, what do they think, like, hypothetically, start date would be?
Oh, he said it'll take, because it takes almost ninety days to get back from, National Grid has ninety days to get back as far as what it's gonna cost you to buy your street lighting back. He said, you know, with that, they obviously, it takes pretty much a full ninety days. And he said, the sooner you can start, you can start it right now. So, like, the Villas Law could submit right now, say, what would it cost to buy back our lighting right now? You can start that process right now, it doesn't commit you to anything. But it will speed up the process later on down the road. But, he, he said basically, if you, it's gonna take you about a year from the time that you first submit to get your buyback and all that, what it's gonna cost. Then they're gonna come out, they're gonna do the audit of designs, and then the infrastructure goes in. Says, once it starts going in, it goes in pretty fast, it's just that initial part, waiting for the stuff to go back from National Grid and then getting, going up in the audit for the lighting.
One of the things that I've always been a little leery about is, we still have to have National Grid poles, because their wires are connected, right? Like, unless you were to dig and put everything underground.
You must rip it up three miles of street.
Right.
Of the village streets.
But, and I don't know which street it is, if you go to Stewart's in Watertown, off of Route twelve, and you take a left, is that State Street there?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Drive down State Street. There are National Grid poles, and there are beautiful streetlights, and it doesn't look bad at all. Just saying, if you happen to be in Watertown, you should drive down that street.
Good project.
And, and check it out. So, I don't think, I don't think that the streets would be too cluttered, even if there were still National Grid poles with a, a. Ornamental light pole associated on that street. Just food for thought. I don't remember what I went for, but I was.
I don't know if there's any other questions, but that's what we're asking. As I said, after that meeting, the group will decide whether they're gonna go, so they, like I said, they've gotten National Grid and heard about what they can do through National Grid for converting LEDs. They now heard this company, private firm, about municipal own side instead of the utility own side. And the next step will be more, still municipal own side, but just a different type of a player involved, so. And then they'll make the decision, kind of, what's for you to proceed.
Thank you very much, Mickey. Cheryl, you're next on the list.
Yeah, mine's gonna be really, really quick, and I'm sorry, I don't have a draft letter. The month kind of snuck up on me here. We have, Snowbell Housing has an option to purchase the, the old jail from Transitional Living Services. And we are going to apply for eight units of permanent supportive housing for homeless individuals and small families from the Homeless Housing Assistance Program grant. We're working on the grant now, we hope to get it in within the next, hopefully, three weeks if possible. And I would like the village just to give me a letter of support for the application. We had, you had given me a letter of support in two thousand and twelve, when Transitional Living, we had put an application in for them through a funding source, through the Rural Area Revitalization Program. Snowbell had actually applied for two hundred thousand for it on their behalf, and then we received the funding, but the application didn't go forward. And they are no longer interested in doing the project, so we're, they were going to put it on the market, so we have an option from them, to purchase it from them. So, we're gonna try and see if we can get it from them, but it's not gonna be, it's not emergency, it is permanent supportive housing. And we do have, we did receive a grant to pay for the rental subsidies and the support services. So, we already have that piece for the project already, and we've got a year, when we got that funding, we've got a year to get the capital funded. So, we're looking at, it's gonna be a pretty involved project. We wanna make it look like the way it used to look with the porch, with the round front porch in the front, and, and kinda bring it back to give it some character. So, I think it'll be a good project. So, basically, we're just looking for a letter, and I didn't bring a sample letter, and I, I can do that, though, and send that over to Pam. But it's essentially just supporting, supporting our application, because it's the renovation of a potentially historic building in the downtown business district. So, it would have a building instead of being vacant and continuing to deteriorate. It's, it's gonna present some challenges, because the old jail cells are still there, the crank is still there to close the jails, and, and it would be nice if we could keep that. But I think we're gonna have to, it's gonna be a little creative trying to figure out how to, how to put apartments in those, in those cells, so. Yeah. It's gonna be a balance.
I'll make a motion that we give a support letter to Snowbell Housing for the project that they want us to prepare.
I would second that. Any further questions or discussion?
How soon do you need the letter?
Pardon?
How soon do you need the letter?
Well, I'm hoping to get the application within the next couple of weeks, so.
So soon.
That's why, that's why I said that it kinda, the date kinda, for your meeting, it kinda snuck up on me, I didn't realize it was coming up, so I'm gonna get it over.
If you wanna give, I should say, all in favor.
Aye.
If you wanted to either send a letter of what details you would like to have in there.
Yeah, and I can do that, and basically, looking at the resolution that the village did in two thousand and twelve, and it's, and it's basically the same thing, it's just, I can put it in a letter on that. And it would be to us versus to Transitional Services, so, yeah, I'd be certain we're gonna want to do that.
There right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We're gonna go on to approve the minutes of the September nineteenth board meeting.
So who?
Second.
You, Charlie, thank you, Dan. Sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Approval of the vouchers.
Vouchers. General fund in the amount of seventy-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars, twenty-seven cents. Water fund, one hundred thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and one cent. Sewer fund, seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents. Capital fund, eighty-one thousand, twenty-two dollars and eighty-two cents, and I move on.
Now, second.
Thank you, Ed. Favor?
Aye.
Post. I'm finished with this, five streets of construction.
So, I guess just to give you guys an update, what's going on the last month. So, three contracts for the general construction, electric construction, and plumbing construction have been signed, and the notice received have been sent to the contractors. All the easements have been officially signed off on, Snowbell, the Arrow. Highlander is planning to start Monday, October twenty ninth. And the first area they're gonna start with is the sanitary, starting on Elm Street, and working its way up through the commons parking lot. And then in conjunction with that, they're gonna come back and do the drainage as well, starting on Water Street, working this way up. That's kind of their tentative schedule right now, they're planning on giving us a more concrete schedule soon, week-to-week schedule for this year. So, we'll be on the lookout, look up to that as well. Coordination with Midora and Dean Tanks has started for work on the water, the water storage tank. They plan on starting that work beginning of November. So, there's a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff going on right now, really gonna be picking off, I believe, in the November for a lot of this work, so. And we do have a couple of K apps that I've sent over to Pam from Highlander and from New Century that we have approved. What's gonna happen is, if you guys do choose to approve these, it hasn't been officially, in order to, for EFC to pay for these, they have to sign off on that MWD paperwork, which they haven't signed off on quite yet. So, I'm kind of, I'm not as familiar with this as Jeff Smith is, but basically, what's gonna happen with these is that there's gonna be a ban to pay for the water portion of these bills. So, if you remember, we have a split of seventy-five percent sewer, twenty-five percent water. So, we're gonna be able to pay for the water side, which is about twenty-five percent. So Highlander's was for half the mobilization, came out to be about a little over three hundred thousand. So, we'd be able to pay for twenty-five percent based on the, on the ban.
Do we need to approve that, I don't think.
It was actually approved, and the vouchers, the.
Vouchers, right, I assume so, we don't need to make any extra.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I think that was all the updates I had for five streets.
We had a teleconference meeting with Highlander and NiSIC and GIMO here, yesterday, Raytag.
Yeah.
For coordination of the gas and relocation of the gas, and we kind of extended aid to the gas company. If they needed test poles dug anyplace to let us know, and we would expedite. Their contract for that type of work ends at a certain point, so we had said that.
November first or something.
We'd help them out if we were, if we had the manpower. So, they're very thankful.
Is that on all?
Yeah, do you have any questions? Yeah.
Be nice to see the first shovel.
It's common, there's a lot, there's a lot of mindsets.
The first, the first backhoe scoop.
Yeah.
I want somebody to videotape that for me, in case I'm not there, just so I can see it.
It'll be over on Elm Street, so.
Right. We also have municipal solutions agreement. Pam spoke with them today, or the last couple of days, I think it was today, wasn't it? In regard to what exactly that contract from last month's meeting did provide, they do a lot of the recording to different entities. And with five streets, it is split, there is a divide, they'd be taking care of a lot of, let me say, additional items that are not included in what we currently have through GIMO. It is funding that is already part of our five-streets project, right?
It's part of the EFC budget, probably.
Budget. Do you have more information on that?
I just said it's the estimate going for.
Forward.
Forward for the five-streets project, because they do the double reporting for the water and sewer parts, it will separate, and it is included in the EFC budget.
Any other questions on that? I think it was thirteen thousand five hundred dollars, not to see.
It was the same as about two years ago, yeah, thirteen.
I would make a motion that we approve that contract.
Second.
Thank you, Ed. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. WIIA grant application, that's been submitted, we're just waiting for response, as far as I understand. Wastewater Treatment Plant upgrades, phase two, any information on that yet?
Yeah, there, we went to the municipal board meeting last week, and gave down the more technical presentation, I guess, of where we were, and where the DEC was coming from, with their requirements for mixing and ammonia and that thing. And the conclusions we came to, we committed to having a draft of the engineering report done for the next municipal board meeting, which is the number thirteen. And in that, we'll look at two ammonia options, because ammonia was this, ammonia treatment, or direction that the DEC was coming from, with new calculations and new regulations that they're looking to do. So, we're gonna go there, we'll come up with two options, and of course, we'll comment, and the majority of the report will be the reuse of the existing lagoons. And then because disinfection will be required in two thousand and twenty-three, we're gonna have that in there as well. So, we'll have a section there, the cost doesn't matter, how to treat, or disinfect whether it's chlorine. Actually, we'll look at chlorine and UV. So, we'll have that next month for the municipal board, and if there are any comments from you, we'll, we'll have for you guys, the number ten. And then, at that point, we'll smoke to the DEC if they're willing, once you guys are satisfied.
Crap MOU. Brian and I sat down, I don't know whether it was last Wednesday or the Wednesday before, went through this. I have one from what we had previously, he had one from what his attorneys had previously. You have in front of you, and you can see on the very top page, green is take it out. Red is change or add, and blue is just a couple of things that need to be updated. I would love for you to read through this at another time. I have emailed it also to the, I emailed a digital version to you and the municipal board. But this would be the official MOU that we had been working on previously, that has a little bit more detail in it than the generalized one that we had done. It is emailed to you.
We may not have been that.
Right? So, if you would just look through that, some of the things, you know, agreement is just changed to memorandum of understanding. I don't think there are a lot of changes, but please just look through and, and give me feedback, or if you wanted to edit this in a different color of what you're thinking, certainly you can do that, and.
I see one issue written there.
The move is wrong, yeah.
They left out, for them to sign, they just put their move down.
No, you know what? That's funny that you say that, because, that, well, they have crap hanging through company, and then by was on the fourth, the fifth page. And so, when I printed out the first copies, I was really frustrated with myself, because I was sitting an entire page paper for this one line.
He saved us money by not giving us that page.
So, the next copies I printed out are only four pages, but it is all included. I was just being a little anal there, you know. But, please look that over. Obviously, there is no specific rush, and if you want to see these to compare, I have gone through item by item to make sure that what we had and what we've changed, and made sure that everything was documented as taking out or putting in or changing. You are certainly welcome to borrow these. I can get them to you, I'm gonna take them. I'm gonna take them with me tonight, though, so that I have them back in my notebook when I'm finished. Any questions on that?
It's been a long tech job, I hope we can get it done.
Right, maybe. Village Water System, Microfiltration Water Treatment System bid process is this Friday, right?
Yeah, bids are gonna be open this Friday at ten AM here at the Village offices. So until that happens, there's nothing much to report there. We're still waiting on the bond resolution.
U.S. EPA Administrative Order. Have we, I know that there's been a conversation about setting up a meeting with the EPA.
So we haven't, we haven't heard anything yet? You didn't hear anything? Yeah?
But we're kind of in the works, though, trying to facilitate being good stewards of our violations.
I'm in the process of.
Correcting our violations.
Yeah, I'm in the process of sending them a letter for this quarter, what we've done, or what we're doing, so.
I just sent in our this quarter report and asked that we expedite that meeting. So if you could put a little notation in there, we'll move it forwards.
Yeah. Again.
East State Street Truck Bar.
I talked to Tom briefly before this meeting, I didn't get a chance to talk to Randy. But I guess Tom and Randy had a discussion this week, and Phil has been working on it. And Tom's suggestion is, and I'm thinking Friday morning, Tom, I could meet. You going, honey?
No, I have a, we have a meeting about Mill Creek Friday morning.
Okay. Pick a time early some morning, and I, I'm available any morning. And we'll go over that.
Okay, I'll send you an email.
Okay, and I'll respond.
And I'll be looking for yours.
He's having problems with his email responses, and I don't, I will say that at work, I've been having the same problem. So I think it's a system issue.
You want to go there? Central Lewis County Regional Water Study. You know, the municipal board asked for more details on that prior to their approval.
Can I speak on that?
Further recommendation? Sure.
Today, Pam, yesterday, I got the, from the county, an overall synopsis. And they will attend the next meeting, municipal board. I don't know who it will be at this point, but they will attend the next meeting to answer any questions the municipal board has.
Fifty-four ninety-five Burger Street, our unsafe structure, I believe, was at the county meeting last month. And that they're working with that reservoir to correct the issues from what I understand. Any more on that, Andrew?
As far as I know, it's insurance, that's the hangar.
That thing, that bill's got to be done before.
And so that's why we did the revolution to try to push the insurance. I talked to Cole's father the other day, and they're very frustrated, too.
Yeah. But either way, okay, I'll, I'll check with Ward again on that, but.
Snow will take it down.
Well, I thought that there was a certain amount of time, if it wasn't taken down by a certain amount of time, it would be taken down. And then unfortunately, the property owner or the insurance company, whoever would be billed for that. But I will check in with Ward on that and give him an update. IDA Water Allocation, is that for the commerce part?
I guess my question is.
It's just kind of the.
Let me, this before it said, how it was, what we've approved for their potential development project.
What my question is, and still is, they took that project off the table, wouldn't they need to come back?
Well, I mean, that's, that's up to you, I mean, whether you wanna withdraw the water allocation or leave it in place. Because right now, there's no project pending. But they, as I read the, well, as I read the minutes, they withdrew it for now. I don't know.
Well, when we approved it, there was no project presented to the planning board or whoever either. Like, it was not set in stone. They were doing the legwork to see where, you know, what they had available to them to be able to do a conceptual process, so on and so forth.
I guess the issue is how long do you leave the allocation in place to further?
Well, they're gonna need sewer, too. I, I wish that the idea would come and tell us the scope of what they're gonna need for sewer and who's gonna, who's gonna absorb and grow the cost. I'm the liaison for the county, and I'll, I'll speak on, on that right now, because I went to the county meeting. This issue came up at the county meeting. Legislative Molester was very passionate about feeling that this vote, and Andrea's here, she can chime in and if I say anything incorrectly, was very concerned that cart was in front of the horse and questioned, had anybody been, talked to anybody about water and sewer? And Mr. Dahlhoff said that, that he felt that the zoning board was overbearing on the, on what they did for that process. And that's why I'm, I'm a little concerned about what just transpired here tonight. And at that point, Mr. Dahlhoff asked me to speak about the water and the sewer. And my remark was, we did approve twenty thousand gallons of water. I said, I had concern when we did it, because we were under a moratorium. But as far as sewer, to my knowledge, nobody has ever spoke to this village about the sewer. And so you, you can, you can sense the, the feelings of who wants what with what's going on here. And it's just, to this point, the idea hasn't been to us with, with, with that issue. And I get the sense within maybe the legislative group, there is some concern about an IDA park. But in the meantime, they're buying the climax, the idea is. And I would assume that that money will probably pretty much absorb or exacerbate the money that they're gonna need for the, for purchase from the Touche Land. So my next question is, where will the money come for, for that? But that's, that's what happened on that, and so, and that's my county report. And I figured that was a good time to bring it up based on this.
Early on, just so you know, very early on, Eric Urkle or Tom, myself, maybe even Randy, sat down at a meeting. They were asking for twenty thousand sewer and twenty thousand water. We did mention at that, at that point in time, that our sewer coming from that direction does have a slight bottleneck on Boswick Street. And that was a concern that we, that we sincerely had. No further discussion of anything past that has been presented. We did ask if there was possible funding to help with updating some of our sewer lines, or I should say enlarging our sewer lines. And so that has been mentioned, just so you're aware, that that would definitely be a concern. And it was the same time that we discussed whether or not the water for that area would come off of the town's water, or if it would come off the village's water. Because if it came off the town water, we would have to increase the town allotment in District One, is it? So just so you know, I think that.
Well, basically, it probably shouldn't have been requested from the town to begin with, and then town company, municipal board, because it's town water.
That's what happened.
If I could interject, there's almost two different things. They, they needed the obligation of twenty thousand gallons of each for the shovel-ready designation that they were seeking. And I think a letter did go from the village stating that for that, in order to get the shovel-ready designation, they had to have a minimum of twenty thousand gallons of each. And I'm pretty sure you guys.
Year and a half ago.
Year and a half or two years ago said, you know, we have the capacity, we can commit to that. As far as, you know, which district it was gonna go to. So.
Yes.
Do you know anything, Randy, about the absorption of cost for this?
No, I'm not.
So I have one last thing, and I'm sorry, I, well, I keep apologizing. I'm leaving to go to my son's sectional playoff game. And I have one last thing. I was not able to go to the board meeting for the fire department in September. So I did attend a members' meeting at the beginning of October. They did vote in, I believe it was like forty-eight to two, a new fire department member, Fred Lawton. And I would ask that this board, I would make a motion to approve Fred as a fire department member of our local fire department.
Second.
Charlie, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Everybody have a vote, please.
Good luck.
Okay, new business, craft surcharges.
Joe, I said a couple of other things that they ended up touching on, sorry for forgetting that stuff.
Hello?
I'm kinda hoping you can help me out, Tom. So there's a pre-treatment system at the water plant that got installed this week, is that right? Yeah, so, sorry, I had to step out for a phone call. So are we given an update on the pre-treatment? And we'll tell you guys you could leave.
That, too.
So the pre-treatment, we went up today, and the contractor doing the work, Custer Associates, and the people that are operating the trailer for us remotely were onsite, and they were doing some work. And there, there's an issue that they need to replumb. So there's gonna be some more plumbing that needs to be done. So we were hoping to be up and running this Friday. So they discovered this, this issue, so they're gonna be up next week to update that. It's just a, a coordination thing, so. But the plan, and they are also looking into installation for that thing. So they were there working diligently today. Okay, and I just also wanna touch more on that, on that water study. So well testing is currently in progress right now. I'll help you on that, too. So the, the pumping of the wells and the samples is complete? We ended up doing three weeks of sampling instead of two weeks, more data, better information. The lab results are coming in regularly, and we're sending them, forwarding them right on to NGI, which is our subconsultant, our hydrogeologist. So they're working on that right now. So once we have all of the laboratory results in, daily documents, or prepared document, command, make reservations to municipal board. And I would recommend a couple of members from this board attend that meeting as well.
I'm sorry, Tom, one sec.
What's that?
One sec.
Municipal board, second Tuesday.
Oh, the municipal board, yeah. Number thirteen, okay.
How's that go? My report's almost done. Okay, and there's one other thing I just wanted to add. And I think Ryan's coordinating with you guys, but there's gonna be a financial meeting to go, re-go over all the financial stuff again for all the projects. Next Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, at ten AM, to go over the water and sewer rates again.
On my list.
I believe that's a joint meeting sometime?
No.
No? Okay.
No.
Okay. The rates, the water and sewer rate?
Committee meeting?
Yeah.
No.
Okay. The capital should come to that. Is that gonna be like, a need a special meeting, or is this gonna be like a committee?
No, it's a committee meeting.
Okay.
I say Tuesday?
Uh, Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, at ten o'clock.
Twenty-fourth?
Yeah. So we're gonna update all the, all the spreadsheets and all the good stuff. I think that's, I think that's all I have, so, yeah. I'll reach out, too.
Okay, new business, craft surcharges. Craft surcharges for the month of August in the amount of five thousand eight hundred dollars. And I need a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the housing authority speaking in sanding and plowing contract, we need a motion to approve that.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. Town and fire department contracts, we need permission from the mayor to sign those.
I'll make the motion. I will second, everything works good.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, November meeting, falls to be before Thanksgiving. So I'm thinking we either need to move it up a week, or move it back a week. It's a bit for everybody. A lot of people are gonna be away.
Meeting was originally the twenty-first, but it'll be the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth, we're hoping at?
I think it's the fourteenth tomorrow.
I think they're like the fourteenth.
That's the week before, yeah.
Yeah.
The fourteenth is the week before, yeah.
Do we have anything that's really pressing, that has a deadline that we're gonna miss? Because we're like, I don't think they're doing. Municipal board meets tonight before.
It's fourteen, four thirty, we're watching.
Do a joint meeting. Do a joint meeting.
Can we do that, Sisbon? Can we do that, Mr. Russell?
What's that?
Have a joint meeting?
Twenty thirteen?
Numbers, one bottom of them.
Sure.
Are you gonna stay early and then have them, what, what time do they meet?
They meet at six.
Six? Yep, six.
At least by four.
So we'd be done by six? And we'll go right in?
So you're talking the.
We've done them both before.
Just depending, they have recommendations from that they wanna give to the board trustees.
That's true. Or move the, for the fourth one.
I was trying.
I'm gonna move it to the fourth Wednesday, if there is a recommendation from the municipal board.
If, if it's the fourth Wednesday, I can't make it.
Why don't we do it that Tuesday? And if they have any recommendations, add after you, they're important. We can always schedule a special meeting to, to move on them, otherwise they would come up. Better December meeting.
You know what they will have, perhaps, as rates? Or as a council committee meeting?
So we can have a ten-minute, well, the rates will have to go to a public hearing anyways, won't they?
Yeah.
Oh, true.
Yeah. Should go with the fourteenth?
I say, I, I'll make a motion, we have the meeting on, on November fourteenth, or November thirteenth at four PM.
It's Tuesday.
It's Tuesday.
Fourteenth is Wednesday, so.
We're gonna meet with, we're gonna meet before the municipal board on that Tuesday.
He wants to have the meeting the same day as the municipal.
Well, and then we can stay for their meeting.
Is that what everybody else wants to do? I'm gonna be at a father, grandfather's, son, elk's dinner that night, so I will not be here. I think the chances are the mayor will be, too. I will not be here. I think we better go with the fourteenth.
I'll make a motion, and we have the meeting on the fourteenth.
Yep. I just.
Like you say, if something comes up, we can always call quick, special meeting.
Yeah.
Joe, if I could, I, I think there's a public hearing on the fourteenth here on the number three wind project. We got notifications this week, Monday or Tuesday, that they had a public hearing scheduled at maybe one, three, and seven that day.
So we have to be done by seven?
Well, we, we can't do it. Can't do it that day.
Could we go on? What about the Tuesday before, the twenty, twentieth? The day of the week change, yeah, what about the? Day of the week.
According.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we have it Wednesday, November twenty-eighth at four o'clock.
That work with you, Joe?
Yeah, I can do the twenty-eighth, that's actually.
I know that it eliminates Charlie, but.
That's okay. That's okay. Okay, how's everybody in favor of that date?
I'll make, I'll second that.
Moving on, then, twenty-eleven Ford F-150. Coming in at eleven-two. I would recommend, I need a recommendation to either let it go or hang on to it. Let it rip, let it go.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
I second it. Senator Rip.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Court Sean, that's New York State Board on Electrical Generation sitting in environmental capitation on the number three, anybody got any questions on that? Double Play Sports Center, Turkey Trot. No questions on that, and Randy is, do you have any problems or concerns with it?
If the control is available, fine, otherwise, everybody else that does runs them, Tom, we got one guy on there, we're available, so he may or may not be out there at that intersection, but we got a person working so they can have their run.
Usually we give them that.
Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, New York State Board on Electrical Generation sitting in environmental, I read notifications, information forms, and the public statement hearings for the number three wind farm. Everybody should have a copy of that, anybody have any question? Everybody set with that? All right, we already heard from Al Matushak on the proper annexation.
Can I comment on that one more time, if I've got something more I'd like to say?
Go ahead.
Before we make a decision to, well, town has to agree with first anyways, I think that we need to develop questions, and what our questions are and our concerns, I certainly myself have any questions that I'd like to see answered, and before we, we entertain an adaptation of this property. Whereas, Mr. Matushak can claim that it's tax revenue for the village, that would certainly remain to be seen, number one, and number two, what services year in and year out we have to provide, and there's a lot there that we have to concern ourselves with before we just agree to it, so I'm glad we weren't asked to give us a somewhat decision tonight because I certainly would have absolutely been against that because you have to have time to digest this stuff, and I'm not saying this happened this time, but it just seems a lot of times we get things sprung on us the day before a meeting or the day of the meeting, and I don't like that, I'm old, so I'm glad at least that didn't happen, but I caution the board that we need to be very, very careful about moving forward. My personal opinion about an industrial park in Lewis County, Climax could be the industrial park as far as I'm concerned, everybody, I'm against an industrial park, but I'm only one person.
Is that it, Dan?
Yeah.
Okay, Officer and committee reports, Billy's your attorney?
Just a couple of things, the draft water contracts have gone to the municipal board for review, I assume we'll get some comments back before we finalize them. I have taken a look at the resolution from nineteen ninety-seven that granted the NISIC franchise, there's a couple other documents that I think I need to look at, one would be the application they submitted for the franchise. That resolution does grant the franchise, put some conditions on the grant, and one of those is that all of the territory in the village be included, and that all of the streets be included in the construction. It also required them to post a performance bond, which I'm not sure where that sits, and the purpose of the performance bond was to ensure that construction got completed, so. There was also some requirements, you know, PSC approvals and that sort of thing. I probably need to dig into it a little bit more, so.
Okay, so that would be my question, okay, the performance bond, if there was one.
Probably long, since it expired and released.
And would we be under statute of limitations, or would there be a breach of contract?
Well, it's a thirty-year franchise, so you're still within the contract period, so, but I don't know if there's actually a franchise agreement, or whether that resolution and their acceptance, which was another requirement, is all we have, so I think we need to dig into our records a little bit and see what we can find.
Well, my next statement or comment, Attorney Russell, would be, certainly between NISIC and the PSC, you would think that they would want to honor what seems to be a reputable contract.
Well, I don't disagree, I mean, I do know that there are certain tariffs out there that the PSC has that they can't violate, and that would probably supersede any agreement we have, but I have no idea what, you know, where that stands, and we have to do some more investigation on that before we take any action, which I will do.
I will tell you that when this whole project happened, back when I was working with the board as the mayor, it was everybody's intent, including NISIC, of course, this is just verbiage, that this village would be in its entirety gasefied, and I'm appalled to think that didn't happen.
Well, we're going to continue to look into it, so.
Thank you.
And that's all I've got right now.
Thank you.
Unless there's any questions.
Court Treasurer? Chief of Police? Oh, and been wanting executive session, the personnel, you want to deal with that?
Not for.
Superintendent?
I'd like to have a discussion about personnel in executive sessions, and the other personnel thing that I have is that tomorrow Richie Ross, Joe Zare, Tom Widder will be going for continuing education class training, which is required to maintain their licenses. And Joe, we did meet, and we started going through the contracts, there's a lot of them, as you know, so we're still, we're going to have another meeting next week, and the hope is that they will be able to make a recommendation to the municipal board at our next meeting, so we're pushing hard to try to get them down, so.
Right, there's a lot of them, and once we started digging into it, it was not.
There's a lot of stuff in there, there's a lot of stuff that isn't in there.
Right.
Commissioner Port?
Okay, Captain, I think we've hit on most of it.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't meet, but I would, we'd kind of like to have a meeting on, add on that agenda of the meeting, your brush pickup idea that you sent out from the follow-up from the last meeting, so, so maybe we can get together and meet this month sometime before, we got plenty of time, we don't need again till the twenty-eighth.
Did you get my email on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Good. Didn't send a email out for the schedule for next summer to, just an idea that we can discuss it later.
We can get that, I mean, yeah, but, um, thanks for personnel, if we can do that.
Personnel would require an executive session for that? Finance?
Finance, the court justice bank audits are complete through September.
Yeah, through September, okay, I think I'm up to, I thought I had them through June, but yeah, I will be finishing up, catching those up, and we should be caught up by next meeting.
Okay, Fire Department, the mayor said she must not be, does anybody here have anything on it? Okay, Police Department, nothing. Planning Board, zoning Board?
Uh, no meeting this month, they will, there's no applications, they will meet, I think it's twenty-sixth November, the Monday before we meet.
Municipal Board?
As stated earlier, the next meeting is November thirteenth at six PM.
Nothing to the town, county?
I basically gave my report earlier, I attended the last meeting, and the discussion that interested me was the discussion transpired about the industrial park, and the concerns that a red legislator raised, other than that, they had a presentation from their, I guess, engineers with the county college, and he went through the budgeting process and explained what work was over, and other than that, nothing of major importance happened at the meeting, so that's what I'm requesting.
Okay, public comment, does anybody have any public comment?
I just want to say that, my name is Phil, I'm a resident parent in Village Laval, and I just can't believe how the village has looked this past year. I've lived in this village for forty-plus years, and it's amazing that we haven't had any fires at all with all the brushless on, on the streets. It's appalling. It's terrible. I am, I tell you, I don't feel comfortable, I, I, I'm just appalled at it. This year has been awful, and all the outsiders can't believe what has happened to the village. In my opinion, we'll have to talk to other people, we said, maybe, since we cannot have, I guess it takes five people to DPW to pick up whatever's gotten picked up, the thing is, is that maybe us as village taxpayers have to pull together and maybe have some people pick up and maybe take off our taxes, because if, from what I'm hearing, it's too costly for the DPW to do it. And if you want people to stop doing what they are, when you want to say when you're going to be doing the pickup, please put it in with the, with the water belt, because a lot of people do not read the paper and whatnot, it is really bad, and if you want to, you want more better, because we've got so many laws, but we don't actually go with them, we say a lot, but we don't enforce them, is one thing. If people do not pick up what rubbish they have and stuff, then find them, because we've got to start somewhere, this Village Laval is looking terrible.
Can I comment, Carol? I've had a lot of concerns raised to me myself, and Mr. Beagle and I have been having some discussions on it, our pickup starts next Monday time for the fall, and we're working on something that we hope will be more conducive in next summer, Joe and I have kicked around a few ideas, some of which we may not be in agreement of, but one thing we're in agreement of, we got to do something that's more conducive for the village, but the big saying that, I would hope that there would be some cooperation from those that can take it down, it's pretty handy have it, number one, and number two, a lot of times what happens is when, when we pick up the refuse that the people have, it's the very next day they put more out, and so it's going to be a two-way street, but I think we can do more, and it's our goal to try and do something to accommodate everybody. To do, to make sure that we do it correctly, Tom needs to have more than two men out there because with the insurance the way it is today, if we're not fighting correctly or what have you, and somebody gets hurt, we've got problems too, so there's things that we have to address, but we're going to.
Because it's terrible.
Yes.
I just can't believe it, and another thing, I was here a while back discussing about what's going on Mill Creek, a lot of us are losing a lot of our, our property, and I know that the village purchased down here, or Paul Stanford had, that's going bad, and I guess we're going to be putting a building there for our water, and the thing is, is if, if we're going to do something there and protect that building, what about the rest of us for what we're losing our, our property back, I mean, really bad, and if any of you would have done this, I walked along Mill Creek, all the way up past where the cemetery is, what I'm worried about, and there's a lot of us are worried about, there's a lot of trees that are coming down, and once we have that snowfall, and once that, that breaks come the summer, I mean, excuse me, the spring, we got that bridge that's near me that was done, if you go look at it, there are cracks, and I'm worried about any of those big trees come down and hit that, somebody, I'm just worried about a safety issue.
I don't know if you're aware of it, but there's meetings going on right now as we speak, and.
Because I contacted soil office, they told me a lot of stuff, they gave me a lot, that we don't fall into a class four, dah dah dah, and everything else, and it's just the idea, it's bad.
It's an issue, and I believe we're, I haven't been involved in the meetings, Joe, you have, haven't you?
I've sent in, I'm to.
But I'm just kind of wondering if any of you ever walked it, especially when it was dry, you really get a better view, a lot better view, and you should see a lot of, down where the bridges down here, where Papa was right there, that building there, that old building there, if you walk underneath there, you won't believe what is just holding that building, and you've got a lot of people that like to do exploring, it's dangerous down there. I just went to look, and there's hundreds of things, if anything happens, that side of that building goes, there's going to be a danger, and then all over by Burkhart, look at that wall over there, it's bad, it's amazing, people are living in that building.
Which building, not the one by Burkhart, the one before that you said?
The one that's right across from Stewart's, and if you go underneath there.
Whoop, it's old building.
It is dangerous. Sometimes I think maybe myself, just to say, nobody go because it is dangerous, you won't believe what's just hardly holding.
So I walked the creek bed from the Black River all the way to Rural Life Cemetery.
Yeah, and it's bad.
And what Carol is saying is not untrue.
And the one thing I think is really comical, I went to see one of my neighbors, and I think maybe, maybe we're not going to get a lot of help, maybe a lot of us along the creek, Mr. Maine, it's very comical, he's got old cast iron tubs, and I'm going to tell you, it may hold it, he's got a wall right there, check a look, and I think that is comical, but if something like that could help, something's got to be done, I have seen so much on my property logs, and also I feel bad for ice sneakers too, I mean, they've been asking for help and stuff, and I know that they're going through law proceedings and stuff, but you know what, we're trying to build this community and everything else, and if we don't help each other, what are we saying, we don't care, and that's why I'm looking at it, we don't care anymore.
We do care, but come, we stepped up to the plate a little bit, but I try to see.
We're going to do in-kind services where we can, you people know what's going on too. Tom, you were there?
It's certainly being discussed right now.
Joe was there, but it's just the idea, when we try to get help, we don't get nothing back in return, nobody comes back to us, and it's frustrating, and it's like this, I'm paying taxes along with these other people, and we're losing a lot of our property, I've got pictures here, and I'm going to tell you, there's another gentleman that's got a lot of pictures, and has lost a lot of his property, he's down by the bridge, down further, can't think of his name, but he can tell you, he's worried about his red garages, his barn from a while.
You're talking about Hunter Key?
Yes, go see him, he's got a lot of information of what it's looked at, over the years, it's bad, and I'm just, I mean, it's pretty bad, I work, I've gone.
I don't mean to cut you off, Carol, but I will say this to you, Soil and Water is working on some of the major areas right now, and they want to correct them, and then they'll probably move on.
But I'm just saying, I hope nothing happens to that bridge that was put down where I live, something happens to it, or something, somebody goes across, we've all been forewarned that if any of that, those trees come down and hit after that fall, I don't want nobody to see worse and lose my property along with other people, or somebody get killed, because then you don't want to have a lawsuit.
The bridge is owned by the county.
Well, there's issues when that, with the land.
Who owns the land, Tom?
No, not landowners.
Who owns the land?
I thought she was commenting about concern about the bridge.
Up there, up down here, we do, but what I mean is each landowner, Andrea, owns their portions of the land.
And the village owns a lot of it.
And, and, quite, yes, we do, down here by, beyond the other bridge, I think a lot of the problem with, with Mill Creek right now is something that's going to be very difficult to correct, and it's called insulation on top of y'all, I think that, that there's twenty-some thousand acres, no, yeah, but I think.
It's over twenty-two-five that it drinks.
It's going to continue to be a challenge no matter what we do, and that's what really is.
But it's really, it's really bad.
Yes, I know.
Forty-plus years, and I know years ago, when my dad was alive, the eighties, that part there was dredged by the county, that they, they.
But they can't do that.
No, because there's a lot of red tape, but they did before.
I think behind the scenes, there's some things happening that maybe you may see some, that may have happened before winter.
I don't know, there's a lot of water in there right now, we're meeting again Friday morning at nine o'clock. But I'm just saying, it was best when the water was, with hardly any water.
But it's going to take some money to get this, we need help from everybody. But it's gonna take some money to get this, we need help from everybody. Everybody, landowners that are involved are willing to help. How much is a village willing to help, that's what we're counting on.
We're, we're waiting right now, the way I understand it, on the figures. Correct, uh, Joe?
I talked with Michelle Monday.
She said you did?
She was supposed to get some more figures. I do have ones up, but she says she's sure she can get a better.
But I asked, talked to her, and I never get nothing back.
All this is started within the last...
Couple of weeks.
By four or five weeks.
Oh, I talked to her the past summer.
Well, I'm not saying this just got started within the last few weeks.
But it's just that, yeah, I'm worried, and a lot of people, the landowners on that, on that upper part, I'm just concerned of what, you should see the trees that are coming down, and if that, when we get this, we get the snowfall and the fall, I hate to see what's gonna happen.
We have a seventy-thousand dollar grant for, that's been sitting around for the drainage up at the, on the Matushak property that we were talking about earlier. My question is seeing how, for whatever reason, that got waylaid, this is a drainage issue, can some of that money be used for that? I think that should be explored because it's crazy if that money's just setting it.
But not to interrupt, but it's just the idea, people are the I snickers, they're, they're gonna lose their business if they have, if there's nothing, and it's, they, I talked to them, and they told me, as it stands, they've got a, uh, some kind of, not a contract, but they got an idea, just a starting out for what they need to do, it's a hundred thousand dollars. That's just, so I'm just saying, here we're trying to, I don't know, people to promote business and everything, I don't say, and they put a lot, I don't know where that could go.
I don't, I don't, we don't have time to get into it, Carol, we gotta move on, but...
But I'm just saying...
That particular area, soil and water has already come up with a number.
But I'm saying, you've got, you've got that other, that you're gonna be, that, if you look over there, where you're gonna put that building or whatever.
Soil, soil and water's...
That is, that is, if you're gonna take care of that, so that doesn't go wash away, what about the rest of it?
They've mapped that whole area out, and they're working on it right now, so I mean, there's no sense to keep going on because...
Well, I do, because you may not, you know, live there, but I do.
Yeah, but I, you're saying the same thing over and over and over, what I'm trying to tell you is, right now, soil and water, the county, other groups, landowners, they're working on fixing those major areas, and I snicker is involved, he's been at some of the meetings, so he knows what's going on.
Yes, but you...
So it's a work in progress, I mean, it's not gonna happen overnight.
You gotta save the bridge, that's what we gotta do.
You gotta save the bridge even down there, in case, where I live, in case something happens there too, take a look at it.
Okay, moving on, is there any other public comment? There's no public comment, I would ask for a motion to go on the executive session.
Public motion.
For two personnel issues.